I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Councilwoman Chris Critzer.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Council Vice President Forsythe?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for excusing her. The first item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss potential litigation, RCW 4231101I. We will start with 20 minutes, and if we need to, we can extend it. And then we will be back in open session after that. So it is 7:01 right now. We'll be back in at 7:21. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And we have 13 commenters tonight in the audience and three online. And Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor Bernie. I wanted to make this statement before items from the audience. Two weeks ago, I had committed to make a motion tonight to reopen the teen center. My intent was to do that based on a conversation just a few minutes ago in executive session of which I'm... By the way, the reason I'm wearing these sunglasses is because I had eye surgery and my eyes are burning, so I'm not trying to look cool. I will not be making that motion because there's substantial evidence that to reopen the teen center would not be in the best interests.
Thank you. I'll call up the first four names so you'll know who you're going after. We're going to start with Marcus Charles, then Max Ruhlman, then Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter. Right up at the microphone.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Marcus Charles. I'm one of the promoters at the Concerts at Marymore Live. It's been a few years since we've been here, so we just wanted to check in, say hello. We have some colleagues here from the King County Park System. I know you don't traditionally answer questions, but there's some written materials, our information's inside. We've made a bunch of investments in the sound, so over the last about 10, 10 years, since about 2015 when there was a sound incident, we've had virtually no complaints in the last three or four years. It's highly technical, the way the speakers work now, and you can have remote speakers in the back, and you can have different kind of audible sounds that take out other sounds, all while it's making the sound exactly where you want it to be. And so that's kind of the short version. Those have been really successful, we think, and we're going to continue making more of them. And that's our presentation. You each have essentially a calendar with all the events this year, and then a description of the process we take when someone calls 911 if there is a noise situation. And then after that, there's an explanation of all the investments in the sound.
Great. Thank you, Marcus. And you can hold on just a second, and I will let you know like next year. Let us know, and we'll give you a little more time to kind of share information. But I will say, do any... One, we heard that the Light Rail Station will be open late to help people use the train to get in and out of the park, so we're excited about that.
That's what we've heard too, but we haven't seen a piece of paper, so we're...
Okay, we'll keep working on that. Did anyone have any questions for Marcus tonight? Because this is a major event that happens near our city. Want to give you the opportunity to ask him any questions, even though he is talking for items in the audience. Anyone? Everyone's happy, everyone's happy. Great lineup, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
And next year, we'll make sure you get a little more time.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Next is Max Ruhlman, then Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter, then Rebecca Gronmont.
Hello, I'm staff, and all views expressed are my own. At the first city council meeting I ever attended, back on April 1st, I was approached by Mayor Bernie and Councilmember Nueva Camina. I was told there was conflict, that no decisions had been made, and I was asked to explain myself. I told them that the order of operations decided on was backwards and that clearly something had been planned without community input. Consultants were hired in November. March 15th was when we had the meeting with the mayor and the parks director, telling us we had less than three weeks to GTFO. I started speaking here April 1st, it is now May 20th, and Jeff has been missing for weeks. In that time, I have been learning a lot about government, planning, hierarchies, and civic responsibility. If the mayor and parks director had engaged the community in a responsible, open, and honest way prior to kicking us out, I would not have had to learn all of this, and we would not be here right now. Why would you choose to kick out all the users of an existing facility and relocate them to a facility that was unprepared unless you had a plan? Why kick us out in March if there was no inspection report until July? Why did you structure the order of operations in the way that you did? Finally, for the past couple of weeks, Jeff Hagan has been missing. He disappeared from his jobs in the part, his job in the Parks Department that he's had for 35 years, and no one is telling us anything. Where is Jeff?
Okay, next is Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter, then Rebecca Gronmont, then Richard Lambie.
Hi, I'm a mother, former teacher, and concerned Redmond voter who can't make a full sentence without stuttering, but I'm here to try to talk about the teen center. At some point, someone said that the teen center, said of the teen center, that community is not the same as the building. In the case of the Old Firehouse Teen Center, I would say that the lines dividing the two are really very blurred. There's no denying that the grit and storied history of the Old Firehouse Building itself are a major draw for teens. I've seen photos of the new space, spaces in Marymore Center, and I know I would not have wanted to hang out there as a teen. The new space has no soul, much like a lot of Redmond these days, I'm sad to say. Besides, as plenty of other folks have mentioned, the Marymore Center is not a dedicated space exclusively for teens, and this makes me uncomfortable as a parent. So yes, please, I was hoping there would be a motion to reopen the teen center tonight, but I would still implore the city of Redmond to reinvest in the teen center. A lot of possible solutions, and I mean the teen center in the Old Firehouse. A lot of folks at the last open comment sessions had great ideas about where the money could come from. There are lots of smart people in this room. I'm sure we could find a way. If this city wants to have a healthy community, Redmond needs to care about all of its residents, including its teens. And by the way, if the city does sell the Old Firehouse...
The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Council members generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the city of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. And we have 13 commenters tonight in the audience and three online. And Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor Bernie. I wanted to make this statement before items from the audience. Two weeks ago, I had committed to make a motion tonight to reopen the teen center. My intent was to do that based on a conversation just a few minutes ago in executive session, of which I'm... By the way, the reason I'm wearing these sunglasses because I had eye surgery and my eyes are burning, so I'm not trying to look cool. I will not be making that motion because there's substantial evidence that to reopen the teen center would not be in the best interests.
Thank you. I'll call up the first four names, so you'll know who you're going after. We're going to start with Marcus Charles, then Max Ruhlman, then Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter. Right up at the microphone.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Marcus Charles. I'm one of the promoters at the concerts at Marymore Live. Been a few years since we've been here, so we just wanted to check in, say hello. We have some colleagues here from the King County Park System. I know you don't traditionally answer questions, but there's some written materials, our information's inside. We've made a bunch of investments in the sound, so over the last about 10, 10 years, since about 2015, when there was a sound incident, we've had virtually no complaints in the last three or four years. It's highly technical, the way the speakers work now, and you can have remote speakers in the back, and you can have different kind of audible sounds that take out other sounds, all while it's making the sound exactly where you want it to be. And so that's kind of the short version. Those have been really successful, we think, and we're going to continue making more of them. And that's our presentation. You each have essentially a calendar with all the events this year, and then a description of the process we take when someone calls 911 if there is a noise situation. And then after that, there's an explanation of all the investments in the sound.
Great. Thank you, Marcus. And you can hold on just a second, and I will let you know like next year. Let us know, and we'll give you a little more time to kind of share information. But I will say, do any... One, we heard that the light rail station will be open late to help people use the train to get in and out of the park, so we're excited about that.
That's what we've heard too, but we haven't seen a piece of paper, so we're...
Okay, we'll keep working on that. Did anyone have any questions for Marcus tonight? Because this is a major event that happens near our city. Want to give you the opportunity to ask him any questions, even though he is talking for items in the audience. Anyone? Everyone's happy, everyone's happy. Great lineup, so thanks so much.
Thank you.
And next year, we'll make sure you get a little more time.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Next is Max Ruhlman, then Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter, then Rebecca Grandmont.
Hello, I'm staff, and all views expressed are my own. At the first city council meeting I ever attended, back on April 1st, I was approached by Mayor Bernie and Councilmember Nueva Camina. I was told there was conflict, that no decisions had been made, and I was asked to explain myself. I told them that the order of operations decided on was backwards and that clearly something had been planned without community input. Consultants were hired in November. March 15th was when we had the meeting with the mayor and the parks director, telling us we had less than three weeks to GTFO. I started speaking here April 1st, it is now May 20th, and Jeff has been missing for weeks. In that time, I have been learning a lot about government, planning, hierarchies, and civic responsibility. If the mayor and parks director had engaged the community in a responsible, open, and honest way prior to kicking us out, I would not have had to learn all of this, and we would not be here right now. Why would you choose to kick out all the users of an existing facility and relocate them to a facility that was unprepared unless you had a plan? Why kick us out in March if there was no inspection report until July? Why did you structure the order of operations in the way that you did? Finally, for the past couple of weeks, Jeff Hagan has been missing. He disappeared from his jobs in the part, his job in the Parks Department that he's had for 35 years, and no one is telling us anything. Where is Jeff?
Okay, next is Audrey Greedy, then Faith Otter, then Rebecca Grandmont, then Richard Lambie.
Hi, I'm a mother, former teacher, and concerned Redmond voter who can't make a full sentence without stuttering, but I'm here to try to talk about the teen center. At some point, someone said that the teen center, said of the teen center, that community is not the same as the building. In the case of the Old Firehouse Teen Center, I would say that the lines dividing the two are really very blurred. There's no denying that the grit and storied history of the Old Firehouse building itself are a major draw for teens. I've seen photos of the new space, spaces in Marymore Center, and I know I would not have wanted to hang out there as a teen. The new space has no soul, much like a lot of Redmond these days, I'm sad to say. Besides, as plenty of other folks have mentioned, the Marymore Center is not a dedicated space exclusively for teens, and this makes me uncomfortable as a parent. So yes, please, I was hoping there would be a motion to reopen the teen center tonight, but I would still implore the city of Redmond to reinvest in the teen center. A lot of possible solutions, and I mean the teen center in the Old Firehouse. A lot of folks at the last open comment sessions had great ideas about where the money could come from. There are lots of smart people in this room. I'm sure we could find a way. If this city wants to have a healthy community, Redmond needs to care about all of its residents, including its teens. And by the way, if the city does sell the Old Firehouse lot, we will be watching very closely to see where that money goes. Thank you.
Next is Faith Otter, then Rebecca Grandmont, then Richard Lambie, then Young Cho.
Good evening. Given recent events, I feel that what I will say does not capture the full breadth of the issue at hand, but I'll continue with it regardless because I think there is still a good point to be made. My friends and others in support of this movement have already spoken extensively on the practical issues at hand, and I fully co-sign on everything they've said. I hope you don't mind if I spend... So I hope you don't mind if I spend the foremost of my time telling a personal story. So hi, I'm Faith. My pronouns are she/her. I lived in Kenmore until about three months ago, when I moved to Lake Stephens, and I attended Lake Washington Tech until June 2024. I'm 20 years old, which unfortunately means that I spent the ages of 15, 16, and for the most part, 17, holed up in a windowless half-interground room in my house that quickly became my all-room during the peak of the COVID-19 pandemic. Spending multiple years with very little in-person communication and connection ended up stunting what should have been one of the most formative periods of my self-identity. And it's only recently that I've begun to really kind of, begun to really come out of my shell after some major setbacks and mental health crises. I didn't know about the Old Firehouse at the time. I really wish I had, because at the time, I don't think there's anything that could have helped me more. It would have been a long bus ride from Kenmore, but at the time, I needed connection more than anything. I was so lucky that I had an amazing group of friends that I met online through it, but spending entire months barely verbally talking to anyone aside from my mom hurt me in ways that I'm still recovering from and will probably continue to affect me for my whole life. Having a safe space that I could go to just be around others like me would have helped me more than I can describe. Others who have spoken before me have very clearly outlined how much this new arrangement of teen services are unsafe and unwelcoming for teens. If the biggest users of your teen services are almost unanimously saying how much they hate this change, then that should be a massive wake-up call for you all. You are failing these teens right now, and we cannot accept that. Councilmember Anderson asked us, after the meeting on May 6th, to list three things that each of us want the council to do. I'm not a teen anymore, so I implore you to listen to the teens and the people who work with them foremost, but for my part, one, I'd like to see the firehouse be immediately reopened. I've seen firsthand how much its absence has negatively affected the mental health of my friends. Two, I'd like to see a commitment from the council to supporting renovation efforts for the firehouse. You have a good space, and I think focus should be put on fixing the issues with what you have rather than moving everything over to a new, less accessible space. Three, I'd like the council to commit to transparency with regards to any actions they take regarding the firehouse. The teens that use these services being, the teens that use these services being left completely in the dark, including Councilmember Fields is seemingly going back on his commitment to make a motion to reopen the center after a conversation that was not open to the public, has done nothing but make the situation worse and more inflammatory. Thank you for your time.
Next is Rebecca Grandmont, then Richard Lambie, then Young Cho, then Wolf Adriatico.
Hi, I'm here because I firmly believe that the Old Firehouse Teen Center should be reopened immediately. Since I last addressed the city council, I took time to locate and read the facility summary report that I found on redmond.gov. I also shared the report with two professionals, a civil engineer and the other one, an architect, both of whom have experience dealing with lead paint and asbestos abatement. They both agreed that while the reports highlight many necessary repairs and a general lack of maintenance over the years, it does not indicate an immediate danger to the people using the building. Asbestos and lead paint, which were assumed based on age and not actually tested for the report, do not pose a threat unless disturbed. The survey was dated 2023, published in 2024, which means that those in charge already had this information for one to two years before abruptly shutting the teen center down. That closure done without adequate planning was a mistake, one that reflects a lack of understanding of how deeply this decision impacts some of our most vulnerable community members. I feel especially bad for the high school seniors who have spent years considering the Old Firehouse their safe space. In these final months of their childhood, a time when they should be savoring friendships and preparing for the future, they have instead had their support system ripped away without warning. Senior year is emotional. It's filled with lots of excitement, uncertainty, endings and beginnings, and in the midst of all that change, these teens needed stability, familiarity, and connection. Instead, they were left with nothing. Even those who attempt to attend the teen programs at the new location find it uncomfortable, unfamiliar, and fairly unpopulated. The kids who need it the most cannot get there. This rapid transition was unnecessary. It was handled hastily. If it was determined that the firehouse needed to close, a replacement space should have been created, allowing time to establish and introduce the new location before ever closing the old one. It's not too late to fix the mistake. I urge you to reopen the Old Firehouse Teen Center, if not permanently, then at least until a truly comparable space has been identified, developed, and opened. That space should provide the same resources and crucially must be within walking distance of the middle and high schools. If the new location isn't easily accessible, the teens, especially those who need it the most, simply won't be able to use it. I'm not sure who among you holds the power and compassion to reverse this decision, but I know someone does, and to that person, I say, it's time to do the right thing. End the senseless heartbreak this closure has called and gives these teens back the space they so desperately need.
Next is Richard Lambie, then Young Cho, then Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson.
Hi, my name is Rick Lambie, and I'm the parent of a teen who is very frustrated at the abrupt closure of the firehouse and has been active in the effort to protest the closure and lobby for the reopening of the facility. We've heard compelling stories and testimony over the past few weeks from the community, and I wanted to add my voice and support. Many years ago, I worked as a volunteer staff in a youth center, and then later as part of the formal staff of another youth center. I know firsthand what having a dedicated, safe third space means to teens, and I too was so deeply saddened when I heard the center was closing. Briefly, I wanted to weigh in and advocate for reopening the Old Firehouse while the long-term determination is being made. Repeatedly, in this space, as well as on the website and in emails with council members, I've been hearing the recurring statement that no decision has been made. I do recognize the fact that the council has not made a formal decision. However, a decision was certainly made, and I seek the council's support in setting that decision aside and ensuring the Old Firehouse opens right away. Also, I seek transparency. We need transparency in the process going forward. We can't unring the bell and avoid the harm already done, but the council can seek the community's involvement in the process of coming up with a way to restore this historic building and third space for many teens in this community. I have been hoping for support from this council, given the ongoing public outcry, and I am more than dismayed, excuse me, I am more than dismayed and can't believe the optics of having a closed session and preventing the motion to reopen the center tonight. We need transparency, not more secrets. This is beyond unacceptable. Thank you.
Next, we have Young Cho, then Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Sasha Glenn.
Hi, my name is Young Che, and I've been a Redmond resident for 25 years. I raised my children alongside the Old Firehouse Teen Center. As a parent, it has always been heartwarming to see a grown child return to their hometown and still have a place to remember, a place where they can give back to the next generation just as they once received. My older child's very first show happened at the Old Firehouse. They made films, recorded songs, and played guitar. Some of their most cherished memories were created there. They learned how to coordinate events, how to gather around shared passions, and how to communicate through music, art, and even over a table with cold pizza. Have you heard of Chili Palooza? The teens at the center have. They've been building, preserving, enriching a youth culture. They make Redmond more than just a tech city. It's a place where community-minded teens have created something meaningful and lasting. As a parent of teenagers, do you know what it means to feel completely at ease just knowing your kid is a certain place? That's what the Old Firehouse was. It was the kind of place, a space where we trust, we could trust they were safe, seen, and supported. Teen services aren't just about offering classes and programs. They provide a safe, consistent space, a second home for many young people. I was saddened and angered to hear the center would close, especially since the decision wasn't made without input from the community teens or staff who are deeply invested in the, invested in the space. I had no idea why councilmen, state officials gave up on making a motion to reopen the teen center, but I still stand in full support of the demands outlined on the website, saveoffh.com. Over time, over time, I've come to realize there are things I regret. Don't we all want to make fear of those kinds of decisions, especially when we can? Young people, especially teens, need places where joyful memories can take root memories, take root memories they can return to when life feels heavy. This center was one of those rare places. Building a strong community has always taken courage. It means choosing not to just drift along with the way things are. And right now, our teenagers are watching us. They're learning from how we respond. Shouldn't we show them what it looks like to make a decision we can be proud of? The city must be sure that it truly supports teens with action by reopening the teen center, a space with deep cultural significance and even greater potential for future growth. One more point I would like to add is that the current location is the most bike-friendly option, aligning with Redmond identity, Redmond's identity as a bike-friendly city, maintaining proximity to downtown is essential as well. I visited the site yesterday. It is standing strong and waiting for the teens to return with laughter. Thank you.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Sasha Glenn, then Nia Radford. Noah Radford, sorry.
Hello. If there is new information relating to OFH that should be given to the public now during open session, speaking of transparent backdoor dealings, I'm emailed Parks Director Lorraine Hamilton and this counsel regarding Parks Supervisor Jeff Hagan, a critical staff member who's been on leave, I believe, involuntarily. This leads to a larger issue of staffing teen services. We were promised extended service hours, but for that, you need more staff, not less. It's no secret that multiple staff have to go at some point. What is the city's plan for this? Marymore officially evaporated my soul. The city might be listening, but every day, decisions are made to make our temporary situation livable. It, at least, is Suits Ideas for it. We are vultures desecrating the carcass of OFH, tearing everything off the walls to stuff in closets in Marymore and RSTC. That which isn't at least decorates the bland teen office, but it feels like a mockery. It doesn't fit in with the furniture or building, same as me. The city refers to the Old Firehouse in present tense as if programs are currently continuing there, as if it is currently open, which it is not. This may have led to the confusion throughout the community, as I found out conversing at the light rail opening, that the city closed OFH. Most people were unaware, yet had stories about their child, from their childhood or word of mouth about the teen center's impact. Not only is the city failing to communicate the closure of OFH effectively enough to get feedback from average people who care, but they continuously fail to advertise our shows. There were, there were zero show posters for the first RSCC show, and they rely on me to get word out to my peers for other events. Even if they came, though, why? You already came, you already have a plan to execute. You don't need our feedback. You don't want us in the way you're pesky citizens blessed that you know what's best for us. Like middle schoolers, we don't appreciate the aerospace, quote, quote aerospace, high-tech, video game production, biotech, and thousands of small businesses, end quote. That's from the mayor's bio. And we don't understand that music and art is a waste of time, that we should spend raking in green paper for your resume. And in conclusion, I cannot endorse teen services in its current form. Don't come. Until the city takes informed action to fulfill the community's needs, it is nothing but a sad husk and a reminder of what once was. Thank you so much.
Next is Chester Anderson, then Sasha Glenn, then Noah Radford, then David Morton. Unfortunately, we only give three minutes, but thank you.
A bit of background before I start. I have been physically healthy and able my entire life and have no family history of any physical health conditions. I have had anxiety my whole life and occasional mild heart palpitations as a manageable symptom for months. It wasn't until recently, when my friends and I were forced to take the helm of the social media and outreach campaign for Save OFH due to the city's refusal to acknowledge our needs, that this problem became severe, to the point that I was forced to go to urgent care and miss almost an entire week of classes. And even now, I am weak and short of breath, to the point that I cannot be nearly as physically active as before until I recover, which might not be anytime soon. As Mr. Cohen said, you have literally disrupted a crucial stage of development for every teen here on the east side. You have taken away our one safe place, forcing us to find other, possibly unhealthy, ways to cope with the unwelcoming corporate wire-and-cloth mother exsmeurement you have built around us. One of my friends is homeless now that the firehouse is gone and its resources are gone. One of my other friends is being taken advantage of, and we have no way to seek help for them because the adults like Jeff to seek guidance from are unavailable. My friends who are bullied and excluded in school have nowhere to go other than home to be alone. You are watching in real time the consequences of your decision, but you do not care. I hear you internally justifying as I once did, but your lies to yourself and us cannot hide the truth that you see the lives of 300,000 people as a side job, a few extra grand each month for your vacation fund, something to be cast aside for the idol of possible new investors, corporations, tenants, landlords, zeros tacked on to numbers. In conclusion, someday, we will be lauded for saving the firehouse. I hope you have honor in being remembered as the people in power who threw away their children's lives in the name of greed. Thank you.
Next is Sasha Glenn, then Noah Radford, then David Morton, then Eric Oliver.
Where to begin? I guess I'll just go back to the beginning a little bit here. I guess it was roughly around March 11th, when there was a tiny secretive meeting with a small group of teens and a couple of staff and volunteers, and they were alerted at the Old Firehouse that it was going to be closing in less than three weeks from that time. I didn't find that out until the 19th, when I was picking up my teen after an evening at the firehouse, and I said, hey, how was it today? And she said, you know, it's, it's not good. It's closing. I guess they're just going to close the building down. And I said, what? That makes no sense. I've been there, I've seen the condition it's in. It made no sense to me. So the next day, I visited the teen center in the evening when I was picking her up. I went in briefly, and I just tried to ask some questions, but unfortunately, staff and volunteers were told they couldn't speak to anyone about it. It was made pretty clear that the director of the Parks Department, Lorraine Hamilton, has been extremely aggressive at silencing staff and volunteers. That's come to light for me from many conversations with various individuals and teens. I had said something to the teens that day of, let's try to save it. Let's see if we can fundraise. Let's start a petition. Let's show the city how important it is, because maybe they just don't know. I wasn't thinking anything that weird was going on. But I guess the next day, recreation manager Erica Chua sent this email that I can only assume is regarding me, sent this email to staff. This email, by the way, I got it from our public records requests. We got our first batch in, and we got roughly 1,000 documents, and guess what? Only 200, roughly about 200, were actually unique docs. As a litigator, I do have a past as an attorney, a civil complex litigation attorney, I know what corrupt corporate agencies do to hide documents, document dumps, duplicates and duplicates, and then hidden documents that mean something. So let me read you this email sent by recreation manager Erica Chua to staff@ofh that we got from these public records responses. And this email was sent on March 21st. I had gone into the teen center and encouraged the teens to try to raise awareness and fundraise and save the teen center the day before. She says, hi all, it has come to my attention that an adult came into the Old Firehouse last night discussing their plans to, in quote, "save the teen center." In light of the upcoming transition of teen services from the building, I understand this, that this topic can elicit strong emotions, and it's possible we may encounter more community members reaching out to teens regarding this issue. As a reminder, city of Redmond facilities are not an appropriate venue to solicit involvement for teens in such a campaign, and they should be asked to leave as it is against the city of Redmond code of conduct. So apparently, it's against policy for these teens to have this opinion. You guys really didn't want me to do this, and that's very clear. It's becoming very clear what's going on, and it looks bad. And the, those of you that are up for election, I'd be very worried about what's going to happen for you.
Next is Noah Radford, then David Morton, then... Next is Noah Radford, then David Morton, then Eric Oliver.
Well, this just keeps getting more interesting, doesn't it? There's a big banner out there that says, what will Redmond be like in 2050? I don't know. I have an idea that it's not going to be as good as it is now, but I'd like to take everybody back 25 years. What was Redmond like in 2000? I was 16. I was a dorky kid in high school with a skeleton t-shirt and a wallet chain. And I was bullied, and there wasn't a lot of places to go. And I had it pretty good, though. I didn't think that the one couple of places in the Kirkland Teen Center and the Redmond Teen Center would be under fire. And I want everybody on this council, who I'm assuming is an adult, to take 10 seconds in silence with me to think back to what it was like to be a teenager, and I'll watch the time. I hope that was thoughtful for some of you. I know that some of you couldn't look me in the eye there. No offense to Steve Fields for the eye surgery. I'm sorry about that. I would like to rescind that I was surprised and impressed that you grilled Major Bernie and then turned everything around. I don't know if you're being made scapegoat out of something because you're the only one who seemed to make any forward progress on this, and then had to rescind it and bring these kids up and bring them down. Redmond in 2025 is not as nice as it was in 2000, and as is not just because of the rose-colored glasses of being a dorky teenager and now being middle-aged. I'm 40 now. What's Redmond going to be like in 2050? All these kids are going to be 40. Are they going to still live here? Maybe. What are they going to tell their kids? Thank you.
Next is David Morton, then Eric Oliver.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'm speaking today in support of bold, equitable land use strategies to help Redmond achieve its goal of community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050. The way we shape our land directly impacts our carbon footprint, and now is the time for thoughtful, future-focused action. First, Redmond is revising zoning policies to increase density near high-capacity transit. This lowers emissions by reducing vehicle miles traveled and supports walkable, transit-friendly neighborhoods. By promoting mixed-use, higher-density development near light rail stations and major bus corridors, Redmond makes it easier for residents to live close to jobs, schools, and services without relying on a car. These efforts also help address our region's housing shortage by creating more diverse and affordable housing options. Second, Redmond's urban forests and green spaces can be protected and expanded. Trees are among our most effective tools for capturing carbon, improving air quality, and reducing the heat island effect. Prioritizing tree preservation and development codes, planting new trees on private and public land, and expanding parklands, especially in underserved areas, are essential steps for both climate resilience and community well-being. Green space access should be viewed as a public health and equity issue, not just an environmental one. Third, Redmond can invest in green infrastructure to manage stormwater while also enhancing the urban environment. Permeable pavements, rain gardens, green roofs, and bioswales not only reduce runoff and pollution in waterways, but also add greenery to the built environment and increase our resilience to climate-driven storms. These solutions can be integrated into both new developments and retrofits of existing infrastructure. Finally, Redmond can explore urban agriculture initiatives. Community gardens, edible landscaping, and rooftop farms not only reduce food-related emissions, but also foster local food security, community connection, and education. Zoning and development policies can be revised to support these efforts and ensure equitable access to green space for growing food. These land use strategies are interconnected. They build a healthier, more equitable, and more sustainable Redmond, while with intentional planning, public investment, and community engagement, Redmond can transition toward a low-carbon future. Thank you for your leadership and for considering these critical strategies as you guide Redmond toward its 2050 carbon neutrality goal.
Next is Eric Oliver. And then we'll move to our online guests.
Good evening, everyone, council. Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I just want to drive home one idea: missed opportunities. It's been a mantra of mine for the last few years of, if I plan for something, I execute, and I see areas of opportunity, I look to improve on those opportunities and not miss it on the next go-around. So circling back on my conversation I had promised last time, which was to go visit the new space that's being offered for services to our, our citizens, our, our future. I think it's a real missed opportunity, genuinely. The idea of closing a space that was working and was actually getting the results the community desired wasn't the missed opportunity. I, I'm seeing page one of the light rail, which was a really awesome thing to see open. Looks like planning has been going on for 50 years for the light rail. Super rad. I then think to when I hear asbestos. When was the last time anyone heard tuberculosis as something we should really be in fear of? I think, again, a missed opportunity. Something that's been planned for so long, this should be within a scope to be able to focus on, so that impact is not made in a way that's negative, that there is growth and that the community is able to thrive within, even though there might be change. You know, I'm sure you renovate your house in a way that's safe for you to live in while you're renovating. These are things that people do. The community should not be forced to accommodate when the accommodations really haven't been made to begin with, and then a focus group is then asked to focus on what the city can do to really provide the services needed. I believe the services were being provided, and maybe if you wanted to dial in a few things to make it perfect for everyone, cool. Make it perfect for everyone, but don't take away something that was working. So again, I stand before you to, to ask for the teen center to be reopened immediately, and if not, for a very valid reason to be. Why not? Councilmember Steve, you were about to say, in resounding effect, that the teen center should be reopened. I'm surprised that not someone else on the board is saying something. And if not, then why? Let's not miss other opportunities to be transparent or to be fair to the people that are really just asked for a shot to continue to do what they do. Again, I thank you for your time, and open the teen center. Do what's right for the kids.
Next online is Obi.
Aloha.
Hi. You have three minutes to address the council.
Oh, hi. So this whole situation sort of reminds me of a story. So an old farmer's horse ran away, and his neighbors said, such bad luck. And the farmer said, I'm sorry, I'm getting reverb here. And the farmer said, maybe. The next day, the horse returned with three wild horses, and the neighbors cried, what good luck? The farmer said, maybe. His son tried to ride one of the wild horses, fell and broke his leg. The neighbors groaned, such misfortune. The farmer shrugged, maybe. The army came to conscript young men for war, but rejected the son due to his injury. The neighbors whispered, a blessing. The farmer smiled, maybe. So this closure of the OFH, it reminds me of that story, and I think you can probably deduce why. It was bad, but maybe it's going to lead to a lot more good. I'm going to leave you with just a few things. You may dam the river for a season, but the water remembers its path, and when it returns, as all things do, it won't ask for permission. Ask Detroit what happens when cities choose gold over their children. Reminder, man who says it cannot be done should not bother man who is doing it. Aloha. May you live through interesting times.
Next, we have Edward Hill.
Hello.
Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Oh, okay. You want me to start now?
Yes, please.
Someone is currently speaking.
I think you, if you probably turn your volume down, because it's on delay.
Okay, okay. Thank you. My name is Edward, and I've been a resident of the Redmond Semamish area since 1987. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. When we moved here from the east coast, my son was 12. The old firehouse served for years as a great place for him to join Boy Scouts and meet lots of new friends. My son also attended the first youth concert here held at the firehouse. Now, the firehouse serves used as a safe gathering place. It is a rare, safe, legal place for young people under 21 to hang out and record their musical creations, to put on and attend concerts of their peers, and importantly, to grow socially among their other age peers. I have a master's degree in counseling psychology. As a requirement for my master's thesis, I counsel a group of young people as they matured and grew into adulthood. As all of you can attest, it is hard to grow up. There are a myriad of life experiences that flood in as a child grows up and has to confront life with all of its ramifications. We, as adults, are charged with the responsibility of providing our kids with all of the necessary life skills and opportunities for learning so that they are able to become who they are. Life is a journey, and we, as parents, are responsible for guiding them and providing them with all that they need for a great journey. For the past 20 years, as a deputy director of a federal agency, I negotiated federal discrimination cases. It always disturbed me that discrimination in its ugliest form took what a person could not charge, change about themselves, like their race, X color, or national origin, and take that quality and then viciously turn that against them to disenfranchise them in some way. The young cannot change their age. Youth does not have the political or financial power to lobby for themselves. We have to do that for them. Tonight is up to us to protect the old firehouse for the purpose of allowing youth of Redmond to continue to have a venue for themselves, for their pleasure, for their self-development, for their encouragement of their talents, for continuing to know that they have a safe place, a place of security, a place of learning, a place to cultivate new friendships, a place of peace within the current turmoil of today. Do we have the right to end that? Are we discriminating against them based on their youth and inability to exercise financial or political power?
And in conclusion, sir, your time is up.
Thank you. I hope you make the right decision.
And next, we have Joe Kunsler.
Okay, all right.
Not look good. Or how much didn't you say?
Good evening. Hello? You're comfortable here?
Hello. You have three minutes to address the council.
Wow. Thank you so much, Mayor Bernie. I'm deeply grateful for you calling me back. As they say on the podcast, call me back. It's past 8:00 PM. It's 8:25 PM on May 20th here in Redmond, and 10 days after a new day for sound transit. However, recent events with Alex Zimmerman are at a crisis point, so let me give you a break from the body of public comment and shift of focus to Alex Zimmerman, who was driving his distinctive license, violated a trespass in Bellevue, and he come back June 3rd. This is the same Zimmerman who's terrorized Redmond, and we have a chance to take him off the streets legally, ethically, morally, judiciously. On June 16th, at 8:45 AM, Zimmerman faces a competency hearing in Bellevue. I respectfully request that this council please consult with your city attorney about your options to intervene in this case. I think you should stress that Mr. Zimmerman is a regional font of antisemitism who's likely returning June 3rd to Redmond, and that the ongoing attacks on Redmond's comments and Redmond's strategic interests are, are that Zimmerman should get his mental health evaluation. My biggest concern is that we get Zimmerman off the streets to make your community and City Hall safer and more inclusive. Or that maybe this could be the end of a dark time, or the hour to guarantees that Zimmerman's wars are handed to others. Zimmerman's going to attack you anyway. Wouldn't you rather be attacked for defending Zimmerman's civil rights and his right to a competency evaluation with the information that you have than with more of what Zimmerman has to offer? I think the courts of DSA just need to get the damn memo here that Zimmerman needs a mental health evaluation. That's why I'm asking Zimmerman to weigh in, defend herself in the region, please. And finally, on a personal level, and I want to be very careful how I say this, because I've made one of you uncomfortable, and I apologize here. I am deeply grateful for the public service and leadership of everyone on this council. And I hope that this council will be very clear that you are a regional leader. You just showed the world what leadership really, truly is by bringing people of different faiths, of different creeds, of different colors, of, of both primary genders together to celebrate not just light rail, but the spirit of community, and therefore, Redmond has soul. And with that, may you rest well and be well. Thank you for your public service. Have a nice evening. Be safe, please. Thank you.
Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, I have some resolutions and ordinance to read into the record. Resolution number 1603, a resolution of the City of Redmond, Washington approving placement of a countywide ballot measure before voters in 2025 for a funding levy to support Medic One Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, for the period from January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2031 pursuant to RCW 8452069. Ordinance number 3214, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, establishing a classification of behavioral health professionals, amending PLAYPAPAN's NNS to include behavioral health professional, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Ordinance number 3215, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending ordinance number 3169, 96, excuse me, 3196 by making adjustments to the city's 2025-26 Bynell budget in Exhibit 1. And resolution number 1604, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending resolutions number 1503, Section 1, bidding thresholds and authority and establishing an effective date. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that carries 6-0. Thank you very much. Our next item of business is a staff report, first quarter 2025 financial report. And I think we have Deputy Finance Director Hretha Narin will introduce this item.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to share the first quarter financial report. We had shared the first two months of the first quarter last quarterly meeting. I just wanted to say nothing, not much different from what we had shared last quarterly presentation. As... Sorry. Sorry, technical difficulties. Just a minute. Um, as you may be seeing in the news, uh, we still continue to have, uh, economic, uh, uncertainty and, uh, a potential, um, recession risk. The latest national GDP report shows deceleration in the economic activity while, um, the recession is not declared yet, but leading indicators like consumer confidence, manufacturing output, uh, business investments are softening, signaling potential future recession. Um, just last week, I had an opportunity to listen in to King County's, uh, economic update, uh, which was very informative. I just want to say they are also very skeptical and very cautiously, um, projecting, uh, their forecasts. Um, so, uh, what we had learned in that, uh, presentation is they do anticipate that the Seattle area inflation to remain a bit higher uh, than the national average, to be between three and four percent over the next two years, which aligns with our, uh, budget, uh, where we use three percent in twenty-five and, sorry, four percent in twenty-five and three point five percent in two thousand and twenty-six. Um, they did express, as we are seeing many, uh, cities as well, uh, they did express that there is a difficulty for them to forecast because of so much uncertainty with, um, so many changes in the trade policies, tariffs, uh, and, uh, immigration, uh, policy changes and tax cuts, et cetera. Um, so far, we haven't seen any indication in the reduction in the federal and indirect federal funding for the C I P grants, but we will let you know as soon as we see any significant changes there. Um, that being said, I know I have started all the sad news, but, uh, I would like to share that, um, Redmond has not really seen any ripple down effect for these uncertainties yet. We still see that our sales tax remains strong for the first three months and, uh, but I would like to ensure, uh, assure the council that we are tracking, uh, and monitoring the trends of all the revenues very closely. So any significant changes, we will, uh, definitely come to you immediately. These are our, uh, indicators, sorry, King County's, uh, indicators that we had shared even last time. I just wanted to reiterate what we had shared. This is the C P I W, which was updated, uh, in our last report, I'm sure. Um, they will update their C P I in April again. So, uh, in the next report, we will update these indicators as well. Uh, just to, uh, re- uh, reiterate what I just said, uh, which is our C P I, the city's C P I does align with our, um, with King County's C P I. Um, these are, again, uh, other indicators. This is basically showing the comparison of what was, uh, projected or forecasted in November two thousand and twenty-four and, um, uh, in comparison with the assumptions in two thousand and twenty-fives, uh, by King County. Um, retail sales tax growth has gone down in two thousand and twenty-five compared to the two thousand and twenty-four assumptions uh, here, as shown here. Uh, but just wanted to remind, these are, again, county numbers, not city numbers. These does not consider, uh, the growth that we are expecting due to light rail in the city. So we will, um, we are, there is a potential, uh, revenue increase in the sales tax in that case. Um, one more thing which interests me, one more positive thing that King County shared in the, uh, economic forecast presentation is that, um, they do project increase in, uh, sales tax in two thousand and twenty-six primarily because of the World Cup. So that's great news for us as well. We are getting for the, uh, ready for the World Cup and we will see a trickle down, uh, effect for these increases in sales tax in two thousand and twenty-six. Um, assist value still align, uh, with the assumptions that we had made, uh, during our budget forecast. This slide shows our general fund revenue through quarter one of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, as we had, uh, mentioned during our F A C last week, we have added quite a bit of tables for more clarity and transparency uh, on all the, um, numbers here, sorry, all the categories here. So I hope this will be, uh, beneficial for you, informational for your decision-making. Um, here, I just wanted to say that what this table shows is, uh, the revenue by category, the biennial forecast or the budget target is basically the trend, um, for the last four years, for the, uh, in the first quarter, what, what we had received, uh, in the first quarter for the last four years and the actuals and the percentage over and under is basically calculating, uh, the variance between the target and the actuals. So as you can see, sales tax collection remained really strong. Uh, we are seeing a notable increases in wholesale, um, warehousing, manufacturing and informational business sectors. Um, there is a slight decline, not that significant, but there is a slight decline in the one-time sales tax, uh, which is primarily driven by the development activity. As the, uh, completion of Microsoft, uh, refresh projects and light rail, uh, we will see a stabilization in the development revenue, um, which, um, um, comes to, I mean, to the development permit revenue is also trending, uh, low, um, compared to the target, which is, um, the target is primarily based on the average of last four years. So you might, you have seen that there is such a, um, a surge in the development activity in the twenty-one and twenty-four just in the city and also, um, around, I mean, around the downtown Redmond and also due to Microsoft refresh and light rail. So now, uh, we are noticing that this act, uh, the development activity is more stabilizing and we have already seen that in two thousand and twenty-four and our assumptions for twenty-five, twenty-six matches with that stabilization of activity. I did had a chance to talk to development staff right before this meeting. Uh, they did mention that the number of permits issued has not seen a significant decline, so which is a good news. Business license intergovernmental revenue shows, uh, under target. This is primarily because of the timing of that collection of that revenue. So we will, again, this is just the first month, uh, first quarter of the year. You know, we'll see more numbers over here, uh, in future quarterly meetings or financial overview. Um, these are, uh, last time in our meeting, this list was very long. That is because we were trying to show all the ones that are already implemented. Uh, now we are only showing the ones that are in process. Transport fees are adopted by council. These are just being, uh, waiting for being effective and we are hoping that it will be effective either in June or July. Um, Councilmember Stewart, you did ask if we have any updates on the Sound Transit police revenue. Um, it has been only two weeks, so we don't have any updates to share at this point, but if we do, we will email you right away. This is a slide that shows the graphs for general fund expenditures. Again, um, I would like to share that we added a table for more clarity. We don't see any, um, surprises here. All the expenditures are trending as expected, uh, as of March two thousand and twenty-five. Um, this is another graph that shows, uh, budget to actuals by department. Again, no surprises here. Everything is trending, uh, as expected. Um, this is a new slide in a quarterly report. Um, we are gonna add, uh, the citywide overtime slides from now on and, uh, provide an overview in our quarterly meetings. Um, as discussed during our F A C meeting, uh, we will, um, ensure that we, uh, review the fire overtime separately in the Public Safety Committee meeting, uh, but we will, uh, continue to share this information during our quarterly meeting as well. Um, I don't want to spend too much time on this because we have already gone through, uh, our quarterly overtime report, uh, last F A C, last week. So, uh, just let me know if you have any additional questions on this. I'm happy to answer. This is a slide that shows, um, kind of specific, uh, programs like C I P, B T E P, R A F and T B D. Um, I know these are something that council wanted to see a long time ago on how we are, uh, trending on all these, uh, programs. But please let us know if you want to add anything else into this list. We can certainly add them and, uh, provide you that information. So far, I don't see any, um, kind of drastic changes and surprises. I would like to point out that this is a comparison to the budget to actuals. It's not a true apples-to-apples comparison. We will add a target column next time when we come. That way, um, the comparison is more accurate, um, when you look at the information. This is the same programs, uh, but the expenditure side, um, as you see, C I P, uh, spending is tracking at six percent. Um, this is basically, um, there are many programs or projects that have, uh, that are, um, continuing to, uh, you know, um... I'm losing my English here, but reflecting the continuation of some projects and also the commencement of new initiatives. So I'm pretty sure you will have more information during, uh, C I P quarterly updates that, uh, Public Works is giving. But we do see, um, we do anticipate that, um, the numbers and the expenditure spending will change as the projects start and close, uh, in C I P. B T E P, uh, again, the same thing. Uh, there are some couple major projects that are already started a long time ago, which is W F M, uh, workforce management and D three sixty-five project, phase two. Right now, they are the ones that are, uh, big ones. And I know that there are a few more projects that they have, uh, started, which is, which they have talked about. Energav reimplementation, which is also a new project that they're gonna start very soon. So you will see a spike in the expenditures over here as well. Um, this slide is showing a, basically a pie chart and a bar graph, um, showing the budget to actuals for the capital investment program revenue. Again, we did add, uh, a table for that as well for more, uh, clarity for council. So, um, I would, I would like to reiterate that we will add a target, uh, column over here for more, uh, accurate comparison of the spending, uh, sorry, collections of this revenue. Um... As we are looking at this revenue, I did notice that read, read collections are strong. Um, right now, what it is showing over here is only for a couple months, but, uh, just because the reporting of this has a one-month lag. But right before this meeting, I was looking at, uh, how much we have received. We have received about three point three million as of April, which is about five hundred to six hundred thousand more than what we had received, uh, as of April in last year. So very positive over here, so I'm really happy to see that. Um, impact fees are showing a little bit of dip in two thousand and twenty-five. But again, it's just the first quarter, so, um, I'm hoping that there will be an increase as the projects, uh, start in Redmond. Grants are showing zero. That is, that is very normal during the first quarter just because, um, the timing of the, um, reimbursements, uh, are different over here. So we will see, uh, some revenue as well in grants by next quarter. Water-based water, water-based water utility revenue, um, again, this is pie chart and budget to actuals for these, uh, different types of revenues. Uh, we have a table over here that shows more numbers, which are more interesting. And again, we will add a target, uh, column, uh, in this, uh, on this table as well. Um, I would like to point out that the water and waste water, um, revenue are slightly below, but, uh, it is normal around this season. We will see a spike in this revenue during spring and, uh, summer seasons. King County treatment, uh, rates are slightly below. Again, we are comparing with the budget, so we will have a better, uh, uh, representation of these, uh, actuals in the next quarter. But we did, I did see, uh, slightly below than the target, but no immediate concerns. We are trying to moni, we are continuing to monitor this and we will let you know if there are any significant changes. Um, these slides show, um, budget to actuals by offer. Uh, I don't see any surprises here. Uh, they're all trending as expected. Healthy and sustainable, they are all, it's, it's trending good. Safe and resilient, we did see a little bit of spike on the spending for, uh, under criminal, criminal investigation offer. That is primarily because that there are, um, there was a one-time, um, spending in the first quarter. So that's why there is a spike. Strategic and responsive, there are a couple offers where you see a little bit of spike. One is fleet management. That is primarily because of the fire engine that was, uh, purchased in the first quarter. And, um, also fiscal responsibility because, uh, we pay our risk insurance premiums in the first month of, um, every year. So that is the spike. So it will smoothen out over the years, but, um, that's why there is, um, uh, they are over the budget. Vibrant and connected, I don't see any alarming, uh, changes or under or over. One, except for capital, uh, investment delivery. That is primarily because there is a delay in, uh, um, a transfer that should have happened in the first quarter. But, you know, uh, we will reflect that in the second quarter and make sure that those transfers are done more timely. That's the end of our quarterly report. Uh, I would like to say that we'll come back to you, uh, with the second quarter report. And we thought of August, but I know that there is only one meeting in August, so it's too, it's very hard to kind of, you know, put our agenda item in there. So we will come in September. Um, and, um, as we have been mentioning in F A C and also in the quarterly meeting, we are working on a contingency plan. We are working with the departments to make sure that we are ready for anything that can happen in future. So, but any significant changes, any significant revenue declines, we will communicate to you as soon as possible. We know about it. That's all I have. Um, do you have any questions?
Please, Councilmember, any questions? Councilmember Fields.
I mean, it doesn't matter, but what did we spend the reserves on, under, um, operating reserves? Why would we be spending those so quickly?
That's a good question and I'm really prepared for that, so...
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Um, so that, uh, operating reserves is, um, that particular offer is a combination of, uh, different funds. Uh, one of the fund is capital equipment replacement fund. So we had purchased quite a bit of, uh, laptops in the first quarter to ensure that we are not impacted with tariffs. So, um, that is the spike that you see there.
Other questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, Deputy Director Narra. And first, I just wanna, um, thank you and your team so much for putting this report together and helping us get back into this healthy rhythm. You already indicated that, um, you know, next time there's this incremental change of an additional column you'll bring, but I think that this is helping us set up for a really strong, um, monitoring period. So I really appreciate that. Uh, thanks for mentioning the Sound Transit positions because that was an interest of the whole council during our council retreat. Um, I wanted to just make a couple of comments. Um, and if you don't have this information for today, it's, it's really for next time. That's fine, too. It's just the first quarter. Um, but again, being really curious about monitoring those new revenue generators that we, um, invested in, uh, in the budget. So it's really easy to spot throughout the report, um, the performance of the grant writers to date. I mean, it's one quarter, so, but that one's easier to spot. Um, how about the one percent utility performance as well as the, um, the, uh, results of the business license auditing? That would be another one. And, sorry, I had one more related to that. Oh, earlier tonight, in our Public Safety Committee of the whole meeting, we had an update, um, regarding the, the, our work on the school zone cameras. And I noticed in your report that we are continuing to, to have the, the camera revenues, which really are revenues in order to pay for the program in and of itself. But I, I, I can't speak for the whole council, so I'll, I'll ask my colleagues to chime in. But we are having a conversation about changing behavior when we are in the committee meeting over here. And I would just hate that we are, um, I would hate to accidentally confuse that message with the public. We did hear in the feedback from those who participated in the survey that it looks like we're studying this issue in order to find more revenue by giving people lots and lots of speeding tickets and what we're actually trying to do is keep kids safe. So, um, I don't necessarily need to continue to see the speed zone cameras on this slide every, um, quarter, but I'll leave it to the rest of my, that's my personal feedback. So I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues, um, if they have feedback. So I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues if they have feedback on that. But thank you again for this update.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Council President?
Just one follow-up on that. As a note for the listening public, we've not yet made a decision on those Speed Zone cameras. And we discussed an item that'll be on a future agenda during our committee meeting today.
Thanks. All right, any others? Thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. We are now at ombuds reports. The current month is Councilmember Slahudin.
Thank you. Lots of emails and conversations around the Old Firehouse Teen Center. So that's an ongoing discussion. We received an email from a resident regarding the increase of the amount of noise generated by leaf blowers. And we shared some resources, especially on what the city is doing to integrate electric equipment into our operations where feasible. And that was well received by the resident. There was a question about an alley next to Chase Bank. I've connected them with, with staff just regarding some traffic and potential safety concerns. Question about Hartman Park tree that may fall on a house and people accessing a trailhead. And our staff, Heather, from the Customer Experience Program team, already responded. And the Parks Team has been assessing a tree next to Hartman Park, and they are going to be taking care of the situation. I received a call this morning that I wasn't able to get to, but I will be responding to soon regarding Idlewood Park and just some more information about what's happening with Idlewood this summer. And so hopefully, we can learn more about the entirety of summer programs soon at council committee. But that is it.
Great, thanks so much. Any other ombuds items for anyone? Councilmember Anderson?
I ran into a resident who had some questions about our policies regarding unaccompanied minors on the light rail and if we have any special materials to share with folks in the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other items? Councilmember Noeve Kamina?
Thank you. Continued conversation with community members around the Old Firehouse and hearing concerns that they have.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. I met with a resident regarding their experiences as a renter and an art resident in our city. I connected a community member to Chief Lowe for possible service on his community equity advisory team. And I received a complaint about traffic cones and barrels in a neighborhood that was feeling pretty permanent to the neighbors. The Public Works Team got back to me right away with an answer for that resident. And we were able to share at that time that the barrels and cones were only needed for like another couple of weeks, and then that would be resolved. I got a couple questions from the development community on timing of implementation for state laws that have been passed related to housing regulations. And I did get a response from staff that it's on my plate to pass along to the developers in terms of like what the expected timeline is from our part. And I attended the first birthday party for the Redmond Senior and Community Center. So big thanks to the Parks and Rec staff who made that such a great celebration. It was really fun to meet so many of the, not just vendors and instructional providers, but also the affinity group leaders who are really passionate about their craft, really passionate about their hobbies. And we're inviting folks to get involved. We also had the Affordable Housing Week Film Festival last week. And obviously, I just wanted to thank everyone on the Redmond staff who helped us have an incredible and safe and welcoming opening of the Two Line in downtown Redmond. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And it's great to see you at the one-year anniversary. It was kinda, it was a lot of activity going on there. It was great. Councilmember, excuse me, Council President?
Thank you. I also, in addition to my other fellow council members, have, have been in discussion with folks about the, the Old Firehouse Teen Center and taking lots of deep public feedback on that. Also discussed with a resident who is interested in learning more about how our work on tenant protections is going. And we'll be following up with that resident more. Also discussed with several people at the Light Rail opening, interest in how we're gonna be solving our first-last-mile issues. So we had a lot of interesting discussions with people, a lot of excitement. People were super excited about our, our circulator pilot. And just really great to be able to hear about that and, and also about some of the, the new other types of options we have, like the new Lime bikes and, and continued scooter efforts. And even some questions from neighboring city elected officials on how we're doing different things. So I think that's exciting. And I'm forgetting the last one. So I will close out here, but suffice it to say, I've been talking to a lot of residents recently.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember Noeve Kamina?
Thank you. I had forgotten to mention, I had also joined Councilmember Stewart. And I believe Council President had jumped in for a little bit as well for the Eastside Housing Equity Coalition over at the Together Center this past week. And it was the Affordable Housing Short Films Festival Showcase out of all of the cities. And it could have been because it was at the Together Center. However, I'd like to think that it was our dedication to affordable housing that Redmond had an immense amount of, of representation there, not only from our council, but also from our commissioners as well as our staff, just really showing our dedication, our commitment to affordable housing and having more conversations, which we're super rich.
Thank you all so much for going to that. That's great. All right. The next item of business is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Slahudin?
I'll just do a really quick one because I also didn't cover it in my ombuds. But I attended the One Redmond Foundation meeting last week. And the highlight of the meeting was in preparation for the Marymore Village Light Rail Station opening, in which One Redmond Foundation helped host that. And it was a great turnout. A lot of community organizations that showed up in, in coordination with Move Redmond's opening of the Downtown Redmond Light Rail Station. So I just wanna thank the entire community for showing up, but also those organizations and our council and mayor. So thank you, and staff. Thank you, staff.
Other committee reports? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Last Friday was the kickoff of the Association of Washington City's Legislative Priorities Committee for 2026. So we just got done talking about Olympia, and here we go again. It was a really powerful day, though. Folks actually flew in from all over the state, and we held the meeting at the conference center at the airport. We debriefed on what went well for cities and what was challenging for cities as a result of this past legislative session. Really great to hear perspective from cities and towns of all sizes and on both sides of the mountains. We did, we did begin to evaluate our process for setting our priorities in 2026. And once again, the survey is still available, and something like a total of 16 cities have participated. So please do fill out the survey, councilmembers, and pass it along to your committee members and your various regional committees. We would love to have your input. We evaluated the, the results of our legislative outcomes against our priorities in 2025. I would say the 1% property tax cap, what to do about that, housing, and the need to maybe get creative as a coalition about how we communicate about our needs, kinda took up the bulk of the day. We also had a brief, debrief, if you will, with Representative Fitzgibbon at the end of the day. So if anyone has any questions, really appreciate, appreciate the chance to be there and get the process started, and appreciate Amy Si and Brianna for their support. Also had the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee last week. I'll just report out that there's a lot coming down the pike that is related to rates that are gonna be really tough, really tough on us and really tough on our residents. And there's infrastructure that's needed on some of these major issues. So there is effort in the works to put together an affordability summit, to bring regional voices together with the county, and to get that, get that scheduled by the end of the year so that we can have some of the key leaders that we need in the room to make that happen. So look for that, more to come. We also discussed the emergency medical services levy and solid waste division, division rate, rate changes, which of course means increases. Thanks.
Great, thanks. And thanks so much for being on that state legislative committee. I think that's wonderful that you're taking your time to be there and representing us. So thank you. Council President?
I attended the RIAT Salmon Recovery Council meeting. And this was a really exciting meeting because it's the meeting where we get to do all of our recommendations for grant funding for the Salmon Recovery Funding Board and Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Program, which are state funding sources, as well as the Cooperative Watershed Management Program, $2 million to allocate for the state funding and $4.5 million to allocate for the C W M, which, which comes from the King County Flood Control District. So about $6.5 million going into salmon recovery projects across our region. Some cool things I wanted to note is that several of the projects that we approved were near Redmond or in Redmond. There's a project by Adopt a Stream Foundation. That's a third phase of a project near Friendly Village that's gonna be, be really impactful. There's a project by King County at Avondale Road Northeast in Cottage Lake Creek. Also, a Bear Creek Restoration Maintenance and Student Training effort that's gonna be really cool by the organization Whale Scout. There's also a monitoring six P P D Q in Lake Sumamish effort that's gonna be happening. And I requested specifically on that, which, which we're funding, it's gonna be both Lake Sumamish as well as Lake Washington, that once that, that research is done, that hopefully, we not only get that to the RIAT, but that we make sure that all of our councils get that information. So, and then hopefully, our, our cities, so we can take advantage of that to think about how we can make our, our whole area healthier. And also, an aquatic weed management project in Lake Sumamish. So anyway, a lot of cool stuff. I will also say, since I often am teasing about the work on artificial light at night, which, you know, started with a, a smaller investment and then has just, of, of research, and then has grown over time. We had about four different projects that were related to kind of taking what was built and then being able to do a lot of resident education as well as additional kind of studies and, and creating some of the science-based tactics. So anyway, just wanted to let you all know, this is like one of our biggest meetings of the year to have that discussion. I'll also note that I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership, where we discussed P S R C's Regional Transportation Plan, which is their long-range transportation plan for the Puget Sound region. And it's gonna be adopted next year. And so anyway, that's gonna just be, be starting up and just want everyone to make sure that they're tracking that. I'll send a little information out. And also, we had a kind of a recap on the state legislative session in terms of transportation outcomes. And I'd be remiss, I'd say, at both of these meetings, I actually have the privilege, since I share both of these bodies, just to be able to talk about the fact that actually, on both of these bodies, former Senator Bill Ramos served, working on transportation locally, working on salmon recovery when he was on the Issaquah City Council. And in both bodies, we, we talked about those impacts that, that he really had, not only as a local official, but also then going and working deeply in the, as a House, as a member of the House of Representatives, and then also a, as a, of the State House, and then also as, as a senator. In particular, I mentioned about the artificial light at night funding that kinda spurred all the work that we're now doing. He was the one that secured that proviso initially and really listened to us and really went to bat for a lot of our priorities. So I just wanted to say, I know a lot of us were able to attend his celebration of life this last year, or this last weekend. And he's very missed. And our two bodies from these two groups are gonna be sending some messages to his family just to be able to recognize these contributions. And I wanted to recognize them here at our council. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that. But as you were mentioning, the lighting, I was thinking about how passionate he was about that. And also served with the NOM E T P as well. And yeah, he will be very much missed. So thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Fields?
I was the president of the gun club and primarily talked about ideas that they've had for working closer with the neighborhood to make it more palatable, more easy, more good neighbor-type relations, primarily around schedule, maybe emerging technology that will buffer sound, other things. But I, I thought it was an interesting conversation that they were at least trying to find ways to work with both the city and the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? One thing I'll mention is the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly is this Thursday. I'm hoping some of you can join me there. I think it'll be, it'll be good to hear about our safety road plan and, and the other things that are coming up within the four-county region. So that'll be great. Also, I just wanna say thank you for everyone who came out for Sound Transit opening. It was pretty fantastic. Thank you to the City of Redmond staff. It took so many of them, so many of us wanted to get the, everything up and running and then to, to host the celebration. Also, thank you to Sound Transit and their team, as well as Move Redmond and One Redmond as well, who hosted the celebrations as well. Thank our businesses for participating. You know, I think it was wonderful. I heard so many great comments, not just before that week, that week, after since then, about how great it was to see Redmond and how amazed they are at all the wonderful things we're doing. So great work on everybody for that. And it was just really nice to showcase our city. So thanks all of you for being there as well. It was great to have everybody there. Any other committee reports? We do not have any unfinished business. We do not have any new business. And the last item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss potential litigation. R C W 40 to 31, 10, 1 I for 30 minutes. Action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn. I'm gonna actually give us a few minutes to get over in the other room and maybe use the restroom. So we will adjourn at 9:40. And with that, executive, per state law, executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending, please make sure you leave this remote meeting as well as we join the executive teams meeting, or executive meeting.